All right, if you would, rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the agenda is set, it's a special meeting, we can't alter it. First item is public comment, I need public comment on the budget. All right, hearing none tonight, we're going to talk in order to Public Works about their budget. I see Chris is here, the fire department, Scott, I see you're here, and Brainerd Memorial Library, Tom, you're here, Lynn, Lynn, I see you both here, so. Oh, hi, Mary Jane. All right. So let's take a look at the Public Works budget. Chris, do you want to give us a quick run through?
Yeah, essentially, everything's remained unchanged with the exception of the waste disposal line items, which all show an increase, and that is directly due to the closing of the mirror plant, the burn plant, and the costs that will be added to haul our MSW away as opposed to burning it in the burn plant, so. Other than that, the budget remains essentially flat. Does anybody have any questions as to the waste disposal line items?
No, we were sort of expecting that, I think. You know, not much we can do about that, I don't think.
No, unfortunately. All right, I did, Chris, I did have a question. Ann and I were talking this afternoon about the two overtime budgets, the one in Public Works itself, the other one in Transfer Station.
Yes.
Two years ago, there was only one line, it was in Public Works. And since that, most of that overtime was being used for Transfer Station, we moved the line actually from Public Works into Transfer Station. I know you've got a third overtime line in snow and plow, you know, plowing, snowing, so ice removal, which is pretty clear, but it seems from spending history that perhaps we should have overtime budgets in both Public Works and Transfer Station, and the total that's been spent, the average is about 16,000, so I was thinking 8,000 in each might be appropriate, but I wanted your input on it.
Yeah, it seems that we discuss this every year, and we have the debate over where the overtime should come from. Ultimately, the overtime is served by the guys that have full-time jobs at Public Works, that's where we draw that overtime from. So again, in my opinion, it's, you know, mostly coming out of Public Works, that's probably where the bulk of the the overtime should be reflected in the budget. Those are the guys that are getting paid from that line. Which isn't to say that the staff, although the part-time employees, we try to avoid overtime, that the staff that works there all the time wouldn't have overtime. So, I mean, if you're going to weigh it out, try to be fairly fair about it, you know, more on the, on the Public Works side than the Transfer Station side, I guess would be a more accurate reflection.
Okay, so if I understand, your preference is to charge the overtime to the Employees Department, not to the activity, which I'm fine with, I just wanted to get straight how we're doing it and how much money we should have.
Right, well, the end amount should be reflected in what we've been spending in there, clearly. But yes, that would be a more accurate reflection. And let's say, if anybody else has a different opinion, my ears are open.
All right, Kate, Sean, any questions on Chris's budget?
This is Sean. The increases seem somewhat reasonable, I would think. There was a couple of decreases here I saw, which is nice. Now, there was one, you know, the percentage caught me, 11.3% increase in the custodial wages, are we adding another part-time or just getting more hours for the part-time, or how are we doing that?
Bob, you can speak to that.
Yeah, we've got two people, Deb Talbot acts as a combination building technician and custodian, she probably spends most of her time on building-related items, which is the latest crisis, is we had a pipe freeze weekend before last, and in the community bathrooms at the new fire station, that eats up a lot of her time, and so we're, we've added hours to Diane Gondak's schedule to allow her to pick up some of the cleaning duties. And actually, some of that started during and because of the COVID, the pandemic.
Yeah, honestly, you know, you look at the percentage, and it was, woo, 11%, but the actual monetary amount is nothing, really.
Yeah.
$1,500, so. All right.
This is Kate. Chris, I had a question, actually more about a year-to-date expenditure for the road materials repair and maintenance line?
Yes.
It's, um.
I realize, I realize we blew through that this year, but we also did a a great deal of drainage work, and I I readily admit that we should have had a better eye on that line item. But in my mind, I always, I use the town aid road as a, for lack of a better term, a safety net. So, instead of stopping the work when we ran out of that line, I always, I always looked at that town aid road, knowing that we have, it's never a surplus, but we have money there that we can, we can use for that. Good part is we got more drainage work done.
Yes, I don't think anyone's going to complain about roadwork getting done, so that's, I was just curious about that, thank you.
Yes.
That was all I had for Public Works.
All right, well, my suggestion for the overtime, Chris and Ann and I will work on the overtime, how to split between those two lines. The total will be about 16,000, whatever the split is, it'll be.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, Sean, Kate, you good with that? Are we ready to go on?
Yeah, this is Sean, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Have a good night.
All right, next up, the fire department, Scott.
Good evening, can everybody hear me okay? I have Chief Baber here with me also, from Adam Fire, and I'm, thank you for having us to go over the budget. I'm guessing the big question is the increase. So let me go through that. Basically, you'll see on the Hattam side, an increase of 27.9%. And that's mainly to two different items that we placed in the budget. And it's somewhat affected by the capital budget. As you're probably well aware, we've put together a 20-year capital plan and submitted to the town every year that shows what large expenditures or capital expenditures are coming up over the next 20 years. In that budget last year, without talking to us, both the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance, a few of those large purchases or truck purchases were pushed off last year. So with that, that, we had a truck, Truck 513, which is the rescue truck, which is ailing at this time, and it is in need of some major repairs. So we've put a line in the budget on top of all the regular maintenance for $50,000 to do some of those repairs, since they're going to push off the truck and not fund it at this point. The other item in there was we put a line in for $10,000 for tree removal. We have a lot of tree removal that's needed at all three firehouses, $10,000 will not nearly cover it, but it's a start, we figured we would do a little bit each year for the next three, four, maybe five years, and you know, the, for instance, the biggest need at the moment is Station 2. We're in the process of getting prices for, you know, the reciting and the doors and windows on that building, and we have trees that are actually physically touching the building, growing into the side of the building. Station 1 firehouse, the main firehouse, when you come up the driveway, if you look over the bays, you'll see all the trees behind the building, which are about 20 feet away from the building, are dead. They're eventually going to fall on the building. And then also at Station 3 firehouse, the small one on Route 81, is all around the open property is just dead trees. Many are not in falling area of the building, but there are some that will hurt the building. So we put in the $10,000 to start on some of the most urgent tree removal. Now, if with the Truck 513, if that is put back to where it was, then we don't need that $50,000 to repair it. It has a major electrical issue, as well as the light tower on it is non-functional. And there's also some collision damage that we put off repairing because we knew it was going to be, or we thought it was going to be replaced. So, you know, I, that's, that's it. Last year, you know, we went through the budget process and everybody said everything looked good, and then when we actually got the budget, we saw that these items were pushed off, so. That's where we are now, and we're just trying to do, do what we can to, you know, move forward. So that's a total of $60,000, if you take that out, then the budget is that, you know, only a couple percentage increase.
This is Sean, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Well, more for, I guess, for, well. Well, actually, the actual property of the firehouse to sit on, is that volunteer fire department, do you guys own the properties, that town property? Who actually owns?
Town ahead.
Right, yes, that's my assumption, so. It seems to me that we have, we have a line in, in the town budget for tree removal, is that correct, Bob?
That's correct.
It seems to me that that should be part of the general budget, not the fire department's budget, just in my mind, because we own the property. And my other thought is, on that $50,000, the truck needs repair or repair or replace. That is a capital, that is a capital item. And we just put a million dollars back into the capital budget as a surplus. I think that really should get funded out of the capital rather than operating.
Well, that's, that's okay, to replace the truck is a capital item, to repair it is not.
I know, but.
So, yeah, I mean, I mean, I personally don't want to repair the truck, I would rather replace it, I mean, that's, that's why, you know, that's why we put together a 20-year plan and submit it, I mean, replacing these trucks is, shouldn't be any surprise to anybody. I mean, basically, the town has 20 years to plan for it, and this happens every single time we get to the 20-year mark and people want to push it off, so. We, we, we plan our, we make our, our actions based off of that 20-year plan. You know, for instance, this truck, if we go back five years, when the town was going to bond the roadwork and the town trucks, the Board of Finance asked if we could bond that truck at that time and replace it then. At that year, we had already spent $20,000 repairing that truck, and we said, well, it's, replacing it would be replacing it early, and we just spent $20,000 on that truck. Every year, that truck costs a lot of money to repair. And at that point, you know, we said, well, we just spent a lot of money on it, we should probably get a few more years' use out of it before we get go replacing it. Now, in hindsight, maybe I should have taken them up on the offer and replaced it early, but, you know, we try to get as much time as we can out of the trucks as long as they're usable, you know, I'm not telling you it's not usable at this point, it's just, it's ailing. The trucks in American Le France, they went out of business about 12 years ago, 14 years ago. Sourcing parts is very difficult, and it's, it was not purchased new, it was purchased as a demo because the previous rescue truck, the frame split on it and had to be replaced right away. So it was kind of an emergency purchase at the time, and we did not buy a new one at that time.
No, and I understand about the capital things, I think, remember, when I was on the Board of Finance, I I commended you guys because you were one of the few that actually put out a nice, long plan, and so, I guess, the question is, how long has this truck been on the, on the capital plan, and and can we buy a new one?
It's been there for, it's been there for 20 years to replace in this current year, this coming year's budget, and for $900,000, we've already funded 300, or the town has funded 300 of the 900,000, and is still waiting for the funding of the additional amount so that it can be replaced. You know, I, that's, that's where that stands. So it's been somewhat funded, just, and it has been in the capital plan for 20 years.
Okay, so it has been there for 20 years, okay, that's, that's my question.
Or, well, let's say, since the last one was purchased, which that was 2005, so.
17 years.
So Scott, what year would you need that replaced? Would you need that replaced in the upcoming fiscal year?
That's what we are pushing for, yes.
Okay. Funding to do it this year. Fire trucks are about 18 to 24 months out, we ordered, if we place an order today, it would be like, almost 24 months before we saw that truck. We would like it funded this year, because we're going to go out that much farther, you know, with replacing the truck, and, you know, we're not. And we're abandoning our truck again now that we have, but to keep pushing that out farther and farther, like Scott said, we're going to have to spend some money to keep the truck in service.
Yeah, no, I understand that. All right, I will talk with Joe Sennafonte, preliminary on the capital, to see if we can do, we can move up the purchase, or at least the funding for it.
The other, the other thing I'd like to note about, about the tree removal, you know, I, I agree that, you know, coming out of that, the town's budget for tree removal would be a good thing to do. Two years ago, Sam asked Public Works to take a tree down, and we're still waiting for that. And then, I know, back, Bob, you might remember the meeting, the Board of Directors meeting, the one we had in the Hattam neck bays, we discussed it then, about where it should come from, and didn't really, didn't really get a real direction of what we should do. I mean, I'm okay, as long as somebody like yourself is going to direct them to, you know, do this tree work. I, I don't have any power over getting Public Works to do tree work, so.
I'll talk with Chris.
Hey, Scott, this is Kate, so I just want to clarify, I understand what's being asked. So the, the 50,000 increase in the operating budget, that's for repair and maintenance of a truck, and then in the capital plan, that the $900,000, that's to ultimately replace that truck that currently needs service.
Right, so yeah, what, so, in, in our capital request, it's in next year's budget. Last year, the town pushed it off beyond that, so we're recognizing it where, where we have requested it. So that 50, if, if that truck is funded, then the $50,000 we don't want, you know. We don't need that in the budget, that's just for repairs, there's, the light tower on it is not functional, we, it has an electrical system issue, which is almost $20,000 in itself, and then there's collision work that was, it was in a collision, and we did not repair it because harmed the function of the truck, and we figured, since it's being replaced, we wouldn't bother having it fixed. You know, an older truck, you don't necessarily have to have, you know, you know, in perfect, you know, looking order, but we would let it go and not spend the money on doing that, and but now, if, you know, if it gets pushed off, it's just going to get pushed off more and more, and then, you know, it becomes an issue. I know, if you, if you look at the capital plan, not to muddy the waters even more, next year, there's two trucks at $900,000 apiece to be, or $800,000 apiece to be replaced. These trucks were all put, all three together at the request of the Board of Finance about six years ago. They were spread out over three years. Right now, they're spread out over two years. You know, so the request was made to us to put them together so that it could be budget-wise, they were, said that they were going to bond it. So we moved those requests all together, so it's two big hits, two years in a row. You know, I don't want to hide any of that, I mean, just, you know, just looking at that, that's, but those other two trucks are already funded, half of them are already funded, so, there's, I believe, 500,000 apiece in each of those already funded.
All right, any other questions on the fire department submissions?
No, the explanation was very helpful, though, thank you, Scott and Sam.
No, thank you, I appreciate it, guys.
Very welcome. Thanks for having us.
All right, guys, thank you.
Okay, have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, final one is Brainerd Library.
Okay, good evening, everyone, thank you very much. Before I start, I'd like to just thank Public Works for the work they've been doing in plowing this challenging year. I drove through five zip codes to get here, and I always kind of see the difference when I get over the Hattam line on Candlewood Hill, I feel like at least I won't ride off the road at that point, so props to Chris and his crew, and luckily, I haven't had a chance to test firsthand the fire department, so I'll just say they have an excellent reputation, and leave it there. At any rate, the library is coming in at $368.10, which is flat, again, and we do want to observe the instruction of the budget letter, and also acknowledge the fact that even though the operating fund is by way of accounting, separate from the capital funds, we do want to acknowledge the fact that the town is in another sector, contributing significantly to the library's second phase of the renovation. So we are looking at the contributions of the town in total, and as such, we are absorbing whatever costs, escalations, and rate increases that have taken place in this last year or so. So that's the short version, however, I figure I will do is just give a brief summary of our services in the last year, and then just identify some pressures coming up financially in the next year. So we've been open full hours of service since October 1, which is just a week or so after we got our certificate of occupancy, and patients have been coming back slow and steady, but we are certainly continuing to present programming onsite, outdoors, and in limited capacity indoors, and virtually. Throughout the pandemic, we pivoted to present programming at Field Park, at the co-op across the street, on the library grounds. Been to the farmer's market a few times, we've gone to Hattam Meadows, so we are taking advantage of the outdoor spaces for our programming, even if we couldn't do so inside during construction. We're maintaining our touchless pickup option, it's a little more labor-intensive, but there are a number of patrons who still feel more comfortable with that mode, and we've been adding seating capacity back in since we've been reopening to just provide ourselves a gathering space in limited, safe way, distance way for the patrons. We're hoping to reintroduce larger-scale in-house programming when this Omicron, or the BA2, or whatever spike that we're in, does subside. And we've been continuing our fundraising enterprises, and they have been successful, so that's allowing us to meet our 20% of the operating budget. The pressures, if you will, of before I move on, obviously, with our renovation, we are going into phase two, and I did want to mention that the first thing we're doing is the community room, so that that is available to outside groups, town departments, and whomever else nonprofits need it. So when that happens in about a year's time, we'll be adding that capacity to the community. But obviously, there are pressures, and in next year's budget, I suspect that we will have to move to an increase of some sort. We're looking at, obviously, 6% inflation, and utility rates are increasing, minimum wage is rising, and there's going to be subsequent wage compressing. The library association's recommended salaries have updated, they were 10 years old, and so the new rates are certainly higher than 2011, plus a 2% increase during all those 10 years. Above prices are going up, we found out last month, that was nice. And we're ongoing self-funding of our renovations. We're hoping that the improved facilities, and we expect that they will, will draw more users, but that'll absorb whatever present capacities that we are expending now. The library's going to absorb the cost of a 3% raise for the staff this year, and all the operational cost escalations, but it's probably not going to be sustainable to keep at this 368.10 for a third and fourth year going forward, just given the macroeconomic climate. So that's kind of where we are, and I just wanted to leave space for your questions, and certainly I have, as you might imagine, all kinds of fun facts and figures that you didn't want to hear about, but I will provide to you if the opportunity comes up. So thank you very much for inviting us this evening, and I'm happy to answer questions as you do.
No, I appreciate the, this is Sean. The flat budget, I really do. Yeah, how much, how much you believe that the, the operating costs have increased over last year?
I think because of the book budget going, well, the book costs going up. book budget going, well, the book costs going up. For us to maintain the same level, we're probably at about, uh, fifteen hundred dollars on books. Uh, utilities have gone up significantly. We're at about maybe a five thousand dollar increase on utilities versus, um, pre-pandemic. Um, and there's a lot of internal, uh, maintenance issues that we've had to take care of, our ATRAC particularly. And our plumbing issues are running into the thousands. Um, so, you know, round numbers, we're probably this year, um, holding on to about eight or ten thousand dollars. And then, um, with a three percent increase going into the budget for next year, that's about ninety five hundred dollars plus whatever increases that we face, uh, for twenty two, twenty three.
All right, and you were absorbing that three, we're we're saving for endowment or whatever, correct?
That's right.
You know, I'm 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 all set, Bob.
This is Kate. I'm, sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Okay. Tom, in your, your backup interview, did you provide a more detailed breakdown on what the three hundred and sixty eight K is used for?
Yeah, um, so, um, let's see.
I mean, I don't need to go through the figures tonight, as long as we've got them. We've got, you know, I just wasn't sure.
I continue the, um, operating budget. That breaks down payroll, which is in the probably two sixty-ish range. Um, then materials in the, uh, twenty thousand range, programming in the nine thousand range and, um, maintenance and so forth. So we could certainly send over, uh, a more granular, um, reckoning of of the full amount.
Okay, yes, I'd appreciate looking at that.
Sure.
All right, Kate, Sean, anything else for the library?
This is Kate. No, no questions. I just, I continue to be impressed by the diversity of programs that the library offers. And you're, you try really hard to reach out to all the different generations and populations in town. So, great job always.
That's very much appreciated. Thank you, Kate.
I'm all set. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. All right, Tom, Mary Jean, thank you for coming. Have a good evening. All right, our next meeting on budgets will be on Wednesday night. We'll do the invitations to the agencies we had talked about. And unless there are any other comments from these of the two other fellow board members, I think we are done.
Well, you're all set.
All right. All right, Kate, I think it might be your turn for the final motion of the night.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
All right, everybody, thank you for coming. See you on Wednesday.
Night.